The special meeting of the city council, October 12th, call it to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Turco?
Here.
Councilmember Dobie?
Here.
Councilmember Gross?
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Here.
Okay, I have to recuse myself from this item because I live in this neighborhood. So I'm going to turn it over to the Mayor Pro Tem.
I also recuse myself for the same reason.
One moment, I'll open a breakout room for you two.
We're gonna...
So is this Pro Tem's practice on how to do a brief meeting?
Well, sure, sure. So maybe we could get a report from Ron Doda?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and the two remaining council members.
Oh, wait, I can be on the call though, right? It's because it's by their house?
Yeah, it's 500 feet.
Okay, so we the same district, but not the...
Right.
Different neighborhoods.
Happy birthday, as you were.
All right, so you messed up my train of thought now.
And I apologized already.
All right, so traffic report on traffic calming options. I do have our city engineer Chris online, so he will assist in answering any questions. And I also have our traffic engineer Farhad online as well. So if you have any questions, they are able to answer any questions or provide feedback. So in August of 2019, the city received a petition from residents of the Old Town West neighborhood. Most of them residing on Chestnut and Walnut requesting installation of speed humps on those two streets, again Chestnut and Walnut. At the September 2019 Traffic Commission, the item was discussed and additional traffic calming measures were presented to the Traffic Commission besides speed humps. And after that meeting, the Traffic Commission instructed staff to go back to come back with a list of options or drawings of options to prevent, again, the speeding up and down the street. So at that time, there were various measures that were taken place by staff to provide some baseline data, such as a couple of speed surveys. So I'll get into that in a second. But basically tonight, we're gonna go ask our city council to approve the traffic calming project recommended by the Traffic Commission. So it's a right, and then of course, direct staff to solicit bids. So a little background, again, I stated that in August of 2019, the city received the petition. And as a result of the petition, several actions were taken place, including two speed surveys. Both of those speed surveys concluded there were no significant speeding impact up and down the streets of Old Town West. So then staff presented other various traffic calming measures to the commission. Again, talking about and discussing the pros and cons of each measure. At the March 2020 meeting, the Traffic Commission proceeded to instruct staff to come up with a plan. And then that plan was brought back at the special Traffic Commission meeting on September 30th. That meeting had a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. So basically, a Phase 1 is a small sample size conducting of two streets of lane narrowing and striping to Walnut and Chestnut. So to be transparent, the staff recommended to do Florista, and I believe it was Chestnut. But then the Traffic Commission discussed it and recommended the two streets of Walnut and Chestnut. Staff is recommending to do the Phase 1 and then do a 10 to 12 month assessment. And if the plan is deemed successful, implement the whole striping of the entire Old Town West neighborhood. Okay? I will give you an example of what the lane striping will look like. Wendy will let me share a screen here.
One moment, let me change those settings. Are you able to share now? Let's see.
You see anything?
No. No.
Share screen, post the stable person. I'm still not able to.
Let me go ahead and pull it up for you, Ron. Are you looking at attachment one first?
No, I think it's attachment three examples of the street striping.
Okay.
So while we're waiting for that, in the attachment, there were drawings for Walnut Street and Chestnut Street. But I want to bring this up because this is the actual how the lane striping would occur on both those streets. We would make the lane striping, so the narrowing of the lane would go to the minimum. I believe it's 10 feet, right? And then we'd have these cutout here, which you can see at the bottom here, which would give like a buffer so if people were to open their doors. It's basically a visual site for people know going down the street that when people open their doors and enter and exit their vehicle, that this is a buffer zone. So this has been done in various cities, in the city of LA or Los Angeles County, and it's been proven very effective. And overall, discussing it with our traffic engineer and discussing it with other people in other cities, the lane narrowing and the striping as a result of it is very effective in reducing speed on streets. Okay? Again, Phase 1 is installing speed limit signs at location, which is again Walnut and Chestnut Street. Walnut Street between Catella and Sausalito and Chestnut Street between Cerritos and Catella. And then also included in the phasing of Phase 1 would be installation of a left turn lane on Sausalito to the west of Los Alamos Boulevard. And red curb painting on both Sausalito, near Los Alamos Boulevard to provide the additional space for that left turn lane. And of course, red curb painted will be on the south side of Sausalito near the Boulevard and the north side of Sausalito adjacent to the Sausalito Walk homing track. Again, this will help with the exiting and flow of vehicles in and out of that neighborhood. With luxury apartments coming up and the old townhomes coming up, we see a lot more residents coming in. But this will exit and assist with the flow of traffic. So then people don't have to necessarily come down Oak or Walnut or Chestnut to exit. They can exit straight out to Los Alas Boulevard or Cerritos. I put down here the estimated timeline for project. If city council approves the recommendation of the Traffic Commission of staff, we would go out to bid in November of 2020. Hopefully, we can come back in December of this year for council to award that bid. And then after getting the paperwork and contract and everything, hopefully, we can finalize that in February or March of 2021 and then put down this lane striping and proceed with that project. Again, with the 10 to 12 month evaluation, that brings us up to February of 2022. And again, if that is deemed effective, we will include this into the capital improvement project list for the fiscal year of 2223 for city council for recommendation at that time. Phase 1 will be paid for by Measure M fund, and it will cost approximately $45,000. That's the end of my reports. I, along with our city engineer, our traffic engineer are available for questions.
And council, if I may, we do have one request to speak tonight from Bruce Murphy. And we did receive three written comments that were provided to council in advance of the meeting and are available on the website for review. Would you like to take the public comment now?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. Murphy, I'm going, Mr. Bruce Murphy, I'm going to unmute your phone. You should be receiving instructions on how. Mr. Murphy, you with us?
I think I am.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Pro Tem Mayor Turco and the rest of the board members, at least the ones that are left. My name is Bruce Murphy, and I live at 10951 Walnut Street, which is next to the Jiffy Lube at Catella. And I don't overphase one and phase two. And I think they're a great start for calming, especially the speed limit signs. I don't believe that the proposed installation of left turn lane in South Salido Street and red curb painting at that location will add to the calming measures for Old Town West and should be deleted from the proposal. Hopefully, these different calming measures will work. But if they don't, I think we should consider speed humps in the second phase. Only because although the traffic reports didn't show speeding as an issue, I see it every day, as well as having late in the afternoon traffic cutting through Old Town to get to the freeway, as well as large trucks over three tons during the day going through, back and forth through the Old Town area, mainly in Walnut. Although the only way to stop that, I believe, is through traffic enforcement. As a safety issue, I would hope that the crosswalks at Walnut and Florista Street be painted more visible and have crossing guards during middle schools opening and closing hours. All these measures ensure the safety of our children and residents of Los Alamos. I ask that you approve this measure for implementation. And I appreciate all that, both the Traffic Commission and the city council have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Are there any other public comments, City Clerk?
That was the only request we received.
Okay. Councilmember Hasselbrink or Councilmember Dobie? Any questions from you or comments?
I had a couple of questions real quick. Ron, the reason that you're putting the light at Sausalito is for the impending new residents that are going to be there. So instead of having to go through Old Town, they can come out on Sausalito, which is where they're going to be living on anyway, correct?
That's correct.
That's not solving, it is anticipating much more traffic as those residents from the townhomes and the apartments come in there. That'll isolate them from the rest of Old Town, which is a good thing. With this, because you know, my neighborhood has been pounding me for speed bumps forever, especially through the cut through streets, enterprise, even my street now that, you know, you can't turn left and that type of thing. There is a statistic that shows that the striping will help as far as the traffic and everything. But it doesn't help with speeding. So what's the goal we're trying to do in Old Town?
According to the petition and what has been told, stated was they claimed, the petition claimed that there is a speeding issue in the neighborhood of Old Town. Right? And so that's the goal, is to come up with a phasing where the speeding will be decreased. And to attain that, we recommend that it's the striping and the lane narrowing.
But you said the study didn't show that there was a speeding problem?
That's correct. So when we presented it to Traffic Commission, we presented the survey of the speed survey. But the Traffic Commission instructed staff to proceed with coming up with mitigation measures, calming measures to come up. Because again, just like Mr. Murphy, Bruce Murphy stated that, you know, even though the survey does state that there is an issue, residents there, you know, they stay separately.
When was the survey taken?
Let's see. The first... Correct me if I'm wrong, Farhad, but the first one was in October of 2019 and the second one was in February of 2020.
Okay. Because there's definitely, I know they did a speed survey in my neighborhood, and they said there weren't any. And I sat there on a Saturday and watched five cars go 60 miles an hour down my street. So I tend to default to the residents that actually see it rather than a snapshot in time. But if you're saying that the striping, at least in Phase 1, will solve the majority of that problem, then I think we owe it to the residents in Old Town to at least inform them of why we're doing just the striping. Because I'm telling you, they're looking for speed bumps. Because, so I just want to make sure that we over communicate with them saying we're still watching it. But this has been proven in other cities, you know, the normal, so they understand why we're doing just that. And it doesn't sound like we're spending a bunch of money on paint that's not going to solve any problem.
You're absolutely correct. Phase 1 is just a small sample size on two of the streets. And there's going to be an assessment being done. And so again, if it's deemed successful, then we'll strike the whole neighborhood. If it's not deemed successful, then we're going to come back and come up with other measures, which may include speed humps.
Okay, but we have a way of communicating to the residents that this is pilot of Phase 1 and could be changed or improved or however. Because as soon as they see speed bumps not going in, you're going to have a line out the door.
Correct. I believe along with that petition, we have mailing addresses. So for our special council meeting, which was on the 30th, and even tonight, we sent notices to those residents informing them that we will be bringing that to the Traffic Commission, which was on the 30th and tonight for the council meeting. So we do have a way to communicate with them.
Okay, and then do you also have a way to communicate with just Old Town on next door or something like that? So you can kind of, I just want to over communicate with them so it doesn't like, it doesn't sound like we're doing the easy button?
Correct. I could come with the team and figure out a way where we can do that, whether we...
I don't know, it's a city, if you can post in individual neighborhoods like we can or you've got it, it's all or nothing type thing. I don't know how the business side works for that for posting.
No, we could do notices in specific neighborhood. It's just, you know, we have to see what's the most efficient, cost effective way of doing that. There's several ways to do it, so we got to come back to the team. And figure it out. But my understanding is let's over communicate to the entire neighborhood, correct?
Yeah, because I guarantee they're not going to understand that putting down this paint is going to solve the problem. Because the only thing that slows me down is a big bump in the road, not a white stripe. So I was just telling you what the reality is. So I just want to make sure that they understand that we're really making a concentrated effort to solve this problem.
Understood.
Okay, that's it.
Councilmember Dobie?
Yes. So the picture for reference that you gave for the striping, that looks like a busy street. Do you have reference for a residential neighborhood? Like its efficacy in a residential neighborhood? Because I'm with Shelley, but only thing going to stop me is a black and white bump.
Farhad, do you have any experience with that striping in a residential neighborhood?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and the council. My name is Farhad, I'm the city traffic engineer. This is done in California as part of the completed street. The streets that are wide and residential, they will use this to narrow it down. For example, on Walnut between Catella and Florista, you have 56 feet wide street. And those are the places that we are proposing this treatment as a buffer. If you pass Catalina north of Walnut, we are not proposing that because the roadway is already narrow. And the conceptual of having a wide lane generally make the driver to have more leeway to a speed. And that's all in perception is when you have a narrow tunnel that those lines determine is going to reduce the speed by about five miles per hour. And that's our hope is, because that's the same thing for a speed humps, they reduce between three to five miles per hour. So the common speed on 25 miles an hour, if you go seven miles over the speed limit, that's a normal process that 85% or 15% of people go over the speed limit. That's how the California set the speed limit signs. But generally, the average or 85 percentile is seven miles over that 25 miles. That's how the drivers feel they are safe to drive. But narrowing it down is just giving that perception. And the hope is that it will bring it down to closer to 25 miles an hour.
Okay, thank you for that additional information. But is there some more tangible, like a fact, that it works in a residential neighborhood? Are we hoping? And is it cost differential as to why we're going with the striping as opposed to a few humps as testers?
So let me jump in real quick. So to answer the second part about the speed humps, right? So we need to have a policy in place on the implementation of speed humps. And we currently do not have one. So before we install a speed hump, we'd have to go through that whole process. Secondly, the price of a speed hump is approximately 4,500 to 5,000 per speed hump, right? So if we were to install speed humps in Old Town West, you could be looking at $100,000 plus just to install speed humps.
But what about just in that space where you were going to do striping? What is the...
So, you know, again, I don't know, maybe Farhad knows here, but you probably put a speed hump every, you know, block or so? A block's like every 400 feet?
Generally, if you want to have a speed hump to work efficiently, you need to have it between 1,250 and 300 feet apart. Otherwise, you reduce the speed at that location local, and then between them, they speed up. So you need about two or three per block, two of them at least per block to reduce the speeding. So what else do you want to know?
Yeah, so you know, Walnut and Chestnut is pretty long. I wouldn't say they're a mile long, but you're, you know, just off the top of my head, if he's saying two per block, you're looking at, I don't know, eight blocks in there? So you're looking at 16 speed humps approximately, right?
Ron, I think between some of those, you have only 400 feet apart on the block.
Yeah, so you...
So you can put, and they have a stop sign on either side, so you put one on each block per se.
Oh, okay.
But that one is a lot more inconvenience to the neighbor. And usually, if you put it on one street, then if you don't put it on other street, especially on the grid system, then you're going to diverting traffic. People are going to the street that they don't have it. And then you're going to have complaint from the other side. So it has to be a macro study and putting it in rather than having it in one street only. Because that's going to divert the traffic to other streets.
Correct. And on a macro level, you know, when you're putting speed humps, I was told this today, and I think it's a very good point, that you know, whenever, when you need emergency vehicles going up and down the street to, you know, attend to an emergency call, that will impact, you know, the timing that's there. Because a fire truck or police car has to considerably slow down to get over speed hump or they're going to risk damaging their vehicle. So you have to look at it at a macro level at the same time. But again, you know, I'm not saying that speed humps is not an answer. But again, that's why we're putting it into different phases. Phase 1 is to do this lane narrowing with appropriate speed signs and everything. And then we evaluate for this period of time. And then if it does well, which, you know, from what I've spoken to people in other cities, they say that it has worked, lane narrowing, striping has worked in their cities. And so then we'll just do the whole city. If not, again, we'll come back and then we'll talk to the Traffic Commission to see what's the next step that they would like for us to go towards. I believe to answer your first part, is there any residential neighborhood with lane narrow striping? I believe Farhad told me in one of our meetings, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Farhad and Chris, that you will see a lot of lane striping, the narrowing, up in the city of Los Angeles.
Correct.
Because it's very impacted there. So you know, they have, you know, a lot of lane narrow striping in the city of LA in their residential area.
Correct. And remember that they have a lot higher number of vehicles on those streets. Councilmember Tanya is correct. But the whole key is using the same system. It's because we know it works to lower the speed even from 50 to 45. For the same reason, it's just the driver behavior. When you see a narrow lane, just remember yourself when you're driving and you have two median on the side, you slow down anyway. Because you don't, you kind of feel you're going on a tunnel. So that's the same kind of purpose. Because lane line doesn't stop anybody from doing anything. Except it's just a perception that it makes you to change your behavior. And that's what we are trying to see. If it is working in Los Alamos, like other cities do, then we can move on. But for having a speed humps, as Ron says, there is no policy within the city. And they have had that policy before, but the council rejected a long time ago that we don't want to have any speed humps within the city. So that's something, as Ron says, we have to bring it back to the council to create the policy. Because otherwise, it will be subjective. How are we going to measure, what are we measuring? So it should be a policy for that kind of situation. I hope I answered the question.
Yeah.
Hey, Ron, quick question, because I've been asking about speed humps for six years now. This is the first time I've ever heard that we don't have a policy. I know we put them in the alleys of apartment row. Obviously, we were able to bypass any policy, maybe because they were alleys or so. But I'd like to stick it on the next agenda possible to get this thing started. So if we need to put speed bumps in anywhere, it's not stalled because we don't have a policy. I've never heard of that before, ever. And I've asked multiple times over multiple years about that. So if we could get that going, and even if we don't do anything with it, at least we've got the policy sitting there.
Understood.
And does that mean the alleys did not require a policy because they weren't public streets?
Um...
Firing minds want to know.
Yeah, I think that's what it was, is a private property, and they allowed that because they were bypassing Catella and going behind on the alley and the speeding. And as you can see, they are not 12 feet wide as a hump, they are a lot shorter. So don't do that on a public street.
Way to cover, I gave you the answer, but I want to know for a fact of why we're able to do the alleys.
So council member, just please know that that is something that we are tracking back as to how we did certain things that we did. I'll just say anecdotally, that every traffic engineer that I've ever talked to has told me that he can change my entire world with one of those little reflecting bulbs and then a can of paint. And to a certain extent, I do believe it. This program, in its, you know, in the concept, is that it's a pilot program. The idea is, can correct behavior using the least amount of resources that we possibly can and then essentially turn up the volume as time goes. And I'll be the first to say that while this addresses a specific issue in a specific area of the town, we're not going to be done with dealing with traffic issues in Old Town. We're going to have to address some of the issues that Bruce Murphy brought up with regards to three ton trucks using that area, how exactly we stack those streets to allow for deliveries of commercial areas, and more aptly, how we deflect that traffic to someplace else. So we're going to have to continue to look at this and see if there's other things that we have to add in on top of it in order to make it work for the residents in that area.
Well, and I think also, as we continue on with this pilot program there, we're going to have to take into account the 150 new homes that are going to be there and also school coming back live in person. We've had it pretty easy for about, that's the only easy thing we've had for the past seven months is traffic around schools. But it's going to all rear and saggy at the same time. Those houses are going to come online, school's going to open in person, and holy cow.
You're exactly right. And part of the reason for this approach is exactly that is we want to make sure that we're judging this based on reality, not, you know, the reality of today, the reality of three, four years down the road. And, you know, the idea of making a 60, 70, $80,000 investment on, you know, four streets and not having proper data to show you that it's going to work for the entire neighborhood. I just, we don't want to put the council in that kind of position, so.
Well, and it'll also open a can of worms, because as soon as Old Town gets it, guess what? Kerry Rose is going to come in with their petition too, because they've been begging for it. So it was just, and that's fine, as long as we're prepared for it and we've got proper policies in place, and then all we have to do is go beg for the money, which Tanya can do. and then all we have to do is go beg for the money, which Tony can do.
Oh baby, I had, I had two more quick questions, and I'm, you know, this just might be me being simple minded. But have we asked the residents when the traffic is the most phenomenal? And have we had any of the chief glorious officers to check it out for themselves during those more hectic times? Because I promise you that a black and white or so, just about anybody down, like you see him and it's like, where's the, where's the speed limit? So have, have we looked at that, or is that crack the line?
Chief, you wanna say crack is, I, let me, let me start it. I do know that the police is aware and they've sent a police patrol in the neighborhood, but I'll let the chief expound on that.
Mr. Mayor Proten, if I may, the, since, I think you said September thirtieth of twenty nineteen is when you had that meeting. And we've had two accidents total since then. Two accident reports in the whole area for the last, well, actually, for the last three years, we've had two accidents. For the, we had an accident September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, and then this accident April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one of them was because they ran the stop sign, which is much like a speed hump. It's real, it's there, and you're supposed to abide by it, but if you don't, guess what happens? You run into somebody possibly. And then the other one was a speeding situation. And we were on Florista at that time, the other one was on Catalina. One was on Chestnut, I mean Catalina, and the other one was on Walnut at Florista, technically, at the intersection. One was dealing with the pedestrian, and as they were making the right turn, they ran into a skateboarder. And the other one was a car versus car. We, we have our officers there. You know, a couple of things about traffic calming that I'm very familiar with, because I've done a couple of traffic calming programs before. They do actually have two streets, and if you go down into La Palma off of La Luna, and you go down into Houston, I believe, they have the, the narrowing of the streets through the paint. The narrowing does psychologically make people slow down. It's much like if you got a car or something next to you, and two cars, and you're trying to drive through that area, or if you're trying to get maneuver through a, a much more narrow area, you, you tend to slow down as a result of that. They're always complaining about the traffic over there because of the school, much like we have here on Oak. They have two, a junior high school and a, and a high school in that area, and people use that, that road. But one of the things I know about schools and traffic, and they always only happen within a short window of time. But I would appreciate more that they actually slow traffic down, which is a good thing. So if there are any impacts, they're usually very low speed impacts. The traffic calming psychologically, I know it slowed, I don't know what the stats are for La Palma any longer, but I know we saw a reduction in speed complaints, not that they reduced everyone because they use that as a cut through that street, just like they use the streets here to get to the freeway. But I'll tell you that we did see a reduction in speed, calls and complaints. And, and we did have, you know, the, the assessment done pre-event. And then after, they did the, that with, and that may be something we're also looking at. If you're gonna put up those, the surveyors to, to do the tubes in the road to measure the speed, it'd be a great idea to try to get the measurement afterwards. Because right now, we don't have any proof that that's occurring other than the anecdotal experience of somebody seeing it, which is in and of itself a snapshot in time, you know, because they're seeing it at that moment. And a lot of the times, it's, for most neighborhoods, it's usually people that live within the neighborhood. And some of those people know who those speeders are. So it makes it easier if we can get the, the time and, and then be able to sit out there and wait for them to come through that area. Certainly, if, if, if there is an indicator somehow that there's something that's more predictive than other times for the speeders, we'll definitely have officers in those areas for violators. I know I drove through that neighborhood three times today, four times today. And three times today, there are police officers sitting on Florista, on Walnut, and then not, I think it was Sausalito, or Catalina maybe. And then, so I know that they're out there, and I know that they're watching the speeders and also watching people who are violating stop signs quite a bit. But they, they, they don't, in the last six months, I was looking at the last six months, we hadn't got a citation in that area. So I know that people do exactly what council member Dobie said is, once sooner they see the black and white, it's kinda hard because the streets are wide, they see a lot of traffic coming and stopping, they can see a police car pretty easily. And so that's the one advantage of having a motorcycle police, because they can hide behind things and, and tag somebody. Yeah, but, but, but with the car, they see it and then they kind of, everybody behaves, but they usually only behave for a short period of time. And then once they notice that car's not there, then they resume to the kind of behavior that people are complaining about. So I know you're not asking for my opinion, I'm just asking for a report on, on what we do as enforcement and all that. But I do think that the traffic calming with the narrowing is, is a good start. I think especially when you've done studies that don't indicate that there are actual evidence of speed, because one thing about the tubes being out there is, it's not a police car. So people have either generally no idea why those tubes are there, or they don't see them until it's too late. So if they're gonna be speeding, it's gonna record those things more likely than an effect, and has a less effect on driver behavior than does a police car sitting in the neighborhood. You know, when they see the police car, they're gonna slow down. That's why they always ask us not to be in the area while, you know, while they're trying to conduct a survey, and so we stay out of there just so let the natural flow of traffic behave the way it normally does.
Thank you, and chief, just to be clear, yeah, I need your opinion because your opinion is based on your experience. So please, at least me, I don't, maybe I'm new and I don't know better. But I absolutely need your opinion because it's experiential based. And then my last thing was, you putting a light up, will it have a left turn too? Or is it just gonna be the light and U-turn? I'm a fan of left-hand turns, so I'm just asking.
Farhad, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is a dedicated left turn lane, a dedicated.
Are we talking about Sausalito and?
Right, on the Los Alborard.
Yeah, from Sausalito, that is already broken to eastbound and westbound separately. So if you go eastbound and Sausalito, it'll get its own signal. Left turn and true and right at the same time, then coming down, it'll be the same thing, it's a separate phase.
Great. Okay, I'm done.
Um, I've got one quick question before I, because I monopolize the whole meeting anyway. Is there, is there a reason that the evaluation is so long, ten to twelve months? It seems like this would be something that we could do. We awarded in November, go January to June or something like that? I'm not sure what the ten to twelve months, we're, we're gonna know pretty quick if this works or not. And to be able to move on, at least in the planning phases, or make any changes based on the results of this? I think, I don't think we need ten to twelve months.
Well, two reasons is, one, we really want to make sure that our assessment, our evaluation, we have the proper numbers and, you know, we're doing a thorough evaluation before we come back for a capital improvement, you know, side, let's say the phase two side. So that's, again, we just wanna make sure that we have all the numbers and, again, make a thorough evaluation to make sure that it either works or it doesn't work. And honestly, I always like to over project things, you know? So yeah, we have good enough data at six months, we'll do it at six months. But we're really short staffed right now, and I'm, I'm trying to give.
No, I know, and I just, I just don't want the number to be skewed, because my, my assumption is January, hopefully, if the gods are with us, everybody will be back in school. So January to June, we'll have a real representation of what that traffic truly does. June, July, and August, you know, if school gets out the end of May, June, July, and August, that's just gonna skew the numbers to make it look like overall it's not as big as a problem. So I just wanna make sure that we're truly addressing the problem is during the school year, the majority of it is kids being dropped off. Those times, not everybody, but if the majority of it, you'll probably see a lot less, you know, during the summer and stuff. So I just wanna make sure that we're just not stalling this for a year when we could actually be going into phase two or making adjustments in six months.
No, you know, it's not stalled, it's just, again, just provides us a cushion, because, you know, my years doing this work, whatever timeframe you give them, that's what sticks in people's minds. And if you don't abide by that timeframe, then they get a little upset. So if we could do it sooner, absolutely, but again, it gives us a little cushion just in case, for whatever reason, you know, like I give an example, right? We're doing a project and we're having a hard time getting insurance on a project. So it's delaying our project a little bit, so I just wanna make sure that we have that barrier. But yeah, absolutely, you know, we're gonna evaluate whether it's six months or eight months to do it.
Right, I mean, this is, you know, this is a survey, so it's, the, the delay isn't, you know, we, we just need to start the survey type thing. So I just wanna make sure, because otherwise, we're gonna be talking about this next October, where it'd be nice to be able to talk about it next June, you know, or something. If you feel like you have the data, I don't know what that data looks like or what, what you constitute as, okay, I've got enough data to make some decision or make some adjustments. But if you can kind of maybe give benchmarks and say this project could last anywhere from six to twelve months, the survey could last from six to twelve months, but once we get this benchmark, then we'll consider it a good survey and make decisions based on that. Because that twelve months just sounds like a lifetime. I mean, especially when you're talking about people speeding down roads. Okay, thanks.
There are a lot of construction going on right now around that area, on Sausalito and Sausalito. So we feel like it has to be after that finish, because with the COVID and those construction, that's the issue coming out, if the data is correct or not. Because the first time we took the chance for the speeding was that the people issue was that there was a construction going on at Los Alamos and not enough people were coming in. So our feeling is we have to get to the data that is really actually shows the reality and the complete construction and where the traffic is going. That's the only reason Ron is saying it might take that long.
Agreed, but in January, both of those, at lea, at least the condos will be done. And if, we shouldn't start the survey until the construction is done, rather than lengthen the time of the survey, don't start it until we have true snapshot of data. There's no reason to survey this for twelve months, and the first four months is no good because of construction.
Right. That's correct.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay, just a few questions, most of my questions have been answered, I think. But, you know, if the speed surveys showed no significant speeding, I guess I'm just wondering what data we're gonna get or exactly how are we gonna evaluate whether these traffic calming measures are effective? Maybe I missed it, but.
We discussed this in our traffic commission, so we definitely would get feedback from the residents in Old Town West. So that'd be one benchmark. And then just like the chief inquired, so that's Sergeant Malatessa sits in on our traffic commission. So we would get that type of a police report and, you know, just like the chief said, there's any accident, if there's any citation. And then we would definitely do another speed survey coming up.
Okay, but, I mean, presumably that would still show no speeding issue, right? I mean, if we're gonna improve or stay the same, there's gonna be no speeding issue still, so. Okay, just doesn't seem very scientific from my perspective that, you know, we, we did a survey, there was no, there was no data to support that they're speeding. And we're gonna go to, you know, residents who, who believe there is speeding. But like I think Shelley says, if, if the residents are saying they're speeding, you know, I do trust. Yeah, I do trust them, even if the survey does not show that. You know, one other question, the, the petition was fourteen percent of the neighborhood. And from my perspective, I'm just wondering, do we have any gauge on what the other eighty-six percent of the neighborhood thinks? Have we sent surveys? Are they opposed to this plan? Have they been notified of, of this, of this plan?
So, one, we don't know what the other neighborhood, the rest of the eighty percent think, because we didn't do a survey. But I believe requested by council member Housebrink, we will try to communicate with them that this is, again, if it's approved by council, this is the plan going forward, that we're gonna do a phase one, do a evaluation period, and then hopefully go into a phase two.
Okay, and then phase one, I think there's no cost because of measure M, is that right? Now, phase two, if we go to phase two, is, will that also be covered by measure M? Or, you know, some of that gonna come out of?
Chris, do you have any answer to that?
Yeah, so we'd have to evaluate it next fiscal year to see, you know, what portions of, of measure M that we could use based on our, our CIP program. And if, you know, that would be, that would just be one of the projects that we would have to implement that year if, if that's what the council was directing us to.
Yeah, so I think you're aware as a part of the CIP, we bring it back to, we start off with the budget standing committee, and then we come to the full council, then the council will get to prioritize on the projects, on how they want it to get completed.
So Mayor Proten, if I can, just wanna point this out, is that while we will look for every opportunity to use grant funding, now that we're doing our active transportation plan, once that is in place, that'll open up other grants opportunities for us. But two, I think what is your main point is that sooner or later, yes, there will be general fund dollars that will have to be spent in order to support these projects. And whether or not we're successful in going out and getting grants, a lot of them have matching funds, which we will have to put up in order to be able to access those funds. So again, our bottom line at the end of the day is gonna be impacted by our need to make these types of improvements throughout different neighborhoods in town. And just because, again, kinda what council member Housebrink was alluding to is that we do know that once we start down this road, that there are gonna be other requests that come our way. And we have to be able to prioritize and put those forward for council's consideration. And so yes, I think that down the road, there will be a general fund impact assigned to this work.
Okay, understood. I mean, and, and part of, you know, obviously the calculus involves what it's costing us. And phase one here is not gonna cost us anything. But if we don't have the data which suggests that this needs to be done, my concern later is, other neighborhoods are gonna say the same thing, we're gonna do a speed survey later, we're gonna find no speeding, and, and yet, we're gonna be in a position of defending the fact that we did it here despite the speed survey, not, not supporting it. That's just, that's just one, one concern that I do have. As far as going on in the phase two, like you said, we're definitely gonna have a chance, both on the budget standing committee level and as full city council, to review and decide whether to implement the full phase two or, or portions, or, you know, maybe not do the traffic light, maybe do, you know, just the striping. Is that, just wanna confirm that. Is that correct, city manager?
Right, so the, the whole idea here, again, kind of what you were alluding to is, we do this smaller projects, evaluate the data, once we're good, we get to a point where we can be satisfied that the data is what I'll call real world, real experience data, not impacted by schools not being fully functional, not being impacted by construction. Bring those items back and be able to evaluate whether or not they were successful. And again, this is one of the wider residential streets that we have. So doing the study here, I think there's merit to that just from a, from an anecdotal standpoint of, does it work? If we can prove to ourselves for our community that it's successful, then we can decide if it's something we wanna deploy in other places. And also, whether or not there is additional elements that we wanna add or scale back based on what we learned from the data that we collect.
Can I mention something to council member Jerko on how we are gonna see if the speed is different? The first time we counted, we had two twenty-four hours of measured speeding. So it was done in twenty-four hours, so which you have average of two days on an hourly basis. So even at midnight, we had counts and the speeding on all those streets. Now, on those eighty-fifth percentile, it became thirty-three miles per hour. But so when we measure it after the striping is gone and we get it to be twenty-nine, that means our measure has been reducing the speed by four miles per hour. That's how we are gonna measure after this study. I hope that answers your concern.
Yeah, yes, that, that helps. Okay, I think you've answered all my questions. So just to give my perspective, you know, I, I do have a couple of concerns with this. However, I know the traffic commission has spent a lot of time analyzing this, a lot more time than we have. They've had more data, they've had multiple meetings, and so, you know. had more data, they've had multiple meetings. Um, and so, you know, I do want to rely on their, uh, their, uh, opinion here and their position here. And, and I'm going to do that. I think it's a worthwhile exercise to implement phase one. Um, and so, you know, I think, unless anyone has any other questions.
Well, you've actually triggered one more for me, uh, bringing up the 86% of people that we ain't heard from. Because I remember when they changed that turning lane on Farquhar, and I also remember how quickly they had to turn it back. And it's because, you know, folk don't listen, nobody checks the mail, nobody looks at their flyers. But is there any way that, um, I don't know, Ron or, uh, Chet, that you guys have noticed where people pay more attention? Because 86 is a, is a pretty significant number for people to come and say, I, I didn't like this, I didn't want this, who approved this? Nobody called me, whatever.
So, Ron, please feel free to step in, uh, uh, when I put my foot in my mouth. But I think that, again, the, there's been an issue here that has been brought up to the city council and to the traffic commission, I think, for a couple of years now. And something that, you know, we have an opportunity to study and see if we can make better. And the reason that I'm hesitant to go straight to speed bumps is because of exactly what you're alluding to, is that 86% of the people have not weighed in on this issue and haven't really said that there's something that needs to be addressed. So as opposed to going to the far extreme of what the, uh, measures that we could put in, this is a, what I'll call a, a first step that allows us to evaluate and probably at the end of the day, does not impact the rest of the neighborhood all that much. Uh, we're obviously simply putting paint on the ground. And if it does have, if it does result in that four miles or five miles per hour, bringing down of the, of the, uh, travel time or the speed on that street, then I think that that's a worthwhile investment that doesn't necessarily impact everybody who now has to stop at speed humps and then go over them. So I think it was a, it's a, I think, an attempt by staff to put forward a, a measured approach that allows us also to study something so that we can bring back more hard data to show you before we decide to move on and do this neighborhood-wide and potentially citywide.
Yeah, I agree. And Tanya, the, the Farquhar thing, I was real involved with that. And that was brought on by one very loud resident. It actually took away a lane, um, and it, the impact was huge. But we were able to reverse it pretty quick.
Oh, yay!
With, with this, you know, we've been talking about this for years, and it would be nice if we could show the residents we're actually gonna do something. It might not be the perfect solution or the final solution, but we recognize the problem and we're gonna try to address it. So I think we can't talk about it anymore. We've got to do something. And I think this is the, this is a great first step. And with that, I'll move it.
One second.
Do I have to wait for you to ask me to say aye?
Uh, yes. So we're gonna do a roll call vote. I have a motion by Councilmember Hasselbrink, seconded by Mayor Proten Chirco. We'll do roll call. Mayor Murphy, it's recused. Mayor Proten Chirco.
Aye.
Councilmember Dobie.
Aye.
Councilmember Gross, it's recused. Councilmember Hasselbrink.
Aye.
Mayor Proten Chirco, if you give me a minute, I will bring, um, our other two members out of the meeting.
Do we have to?
Yes, ma'am.
They can't talk though, right?
They can talk now.
Oh, my goodness.
I've been quarantined for a long, long time.
Gusty.
The snarkiness is at all time high.
He's nasty.
Mm-hmm.
Assy Shelley.
We're on mute, uh.
Welcome back, Mayor Murphy. We're on item 4A.
Thank you. Now, if we just had five more minutes, Dean and I would have had Antifa having Thanksgiving with the alt-right.
Put him back in the room, Wendy.
Put him back, put him back.
Yeah, put him back, quick.
Okay. We're gonna go to closed session. Item number four, Michael?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss item 4A as listed on tonight's agenda.
Council, if you come out, Zoom automatically muted your, uh, microphones. You can go ahead and unmute yourselves.
Everybody with us?
Yep.
Michael, you were? You want?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The city council has returned from closed session, and there is reportable action this evening. By unanimous vote of the city council, city council has directed staff to file an appeal of the Southern California Association of Governments, uh, I'm sorry, to file an appeal with the Southern California Association of Governments challenging the city's six-cycle RENA allocation, and also directing staff to return.
They muted your, uh, microphones. You can go ahead and unmute yourselves.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll just jump right back into where I was. Uh, the second component of the direction provided by city council was that staff return with a resolution memorializing the city's opposition to the RENA methodology, uh, for the six-cycle RENA allocation.
There is reportable action this evening. By unanimous vote of the city council, city council has directed staff to file an appeal of the Southern.
I think we're done, eh?
Governments, uh, I'm sorry, to file an appeal with the Southern California Association of Governments challenging the city's six-cycle RENA allocation, and also directing staff to return.
They muted your, uh, microphones. You can go ahead and unmute yourselves.
Yeah.
It's looping.
Okay, um, I'll, I'll just jump right back into where I was. Uh, the second component of the direction provided by city.
This will just continue. So, Michael, have you said what you needed to say?
Yes, twice.
Okay.
Say it a third time and we have a majority.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Bye.
And directed staff to file an appeal of the Southern. I think we're done, eh?